I plainly give this to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation of America, individual, the liberty, and justice for all.
I would like to stay standing and offer a short prayer. Thank you, God, for giving us the greatest country in the world to live in. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to serve our people. Let us guide us wisely and get us home safely. Take care of our family and keep us safe. Freedom of speech and access to information.
We comply with the Freedom of Information Act, rules of privacy, and the limits provided to all media persons requesting information. Mr. Marra?
Yes.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Yonkin?
Here.
And Mr. Folsom? And Mr. Wilson?
Here.
We have a public hearing on ordinance number 2021-05, sale of 23 acres of land on Folly Road, the second and final reading.
No.
Does anyone sign up to speak?
Okay, we do have anyone signing on the stage. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about the public hearing? It's silent. We don't have anyone.
All right, well, if no one signed up to make any comments, I would like to make a note of the passed ordinance number 2021-05, with 23 acres. All right, I don't know.
Call the hearing closed.
All right, call the hearing closed, sorry. I'm still in this game. Oral Reboot Commission, we have no one signed in. I am applying to send agenda for regular commission meetings from June 28th, W.A.C., Main Committee, and Waste Water. Does anyone have any adjustments to my minutes that were spoken in our text?
Mr. Cash?
Okay, I need a second, so call both.
Mr. Marra?
Yes.
Mr. Folsom?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Yonkin?
Yes.
Mr. Folsom? And there's no one? Yeah.
All right, number six, we second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt for number six here. There was something special to the working. There were new developments that happened this afternoon. We have a proposal for a nonparticular.
I think this time it can be approached with a new session. We're doing most of the work. Well, I don't know. Well, only in the, um, three hundred five. Before I answer.
Five more. Six.
Why did they do this?
So, um, thank you. All right, thank you. The first question.
Um, I've been very careful to set it down like whether we can resist to be on the following. But, um, going ahead.
Well, how about the motion is the most of the items is number twelve. To open out of number six.
And the energy is definitely special at this time. That's over.
Mr. Marra?
Yes.
Mr. Folsom?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
And Mr. Folsom?
No.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie. All the ones.
Thank you.
All right.
At seven thirteen, we have exited Executive Session. There are other actions worth taking. We are now resuming the date on Public Service District Monday, July twenty-sixth meeting. We were on item number six, which is the ordinance number 2021-05, sale of 23 acres on Folly Road. It's the second and final reading. There were no public comments to be made. There is an offer, there is a contract, and I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance number 2021-05. I second. Okay?
Yes. Um, we agreed with the case for your last week that an audit here has been dealing with right next door to the parcel that we don't have with the box. This is very plain parcel. But we now know that next door will be a audit first of all, three of all. The point is to make that, uh, that one out.
And what about you? Mr. Marra?
Yes.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Yonkin?
No.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
What's your opinion?
Okay, uh, the number seven, updates for the engineering task order, 21-1.
I don't know how much I'm playing, but I think it's a good one. We're discussing it on one more, one more, two, three.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Yeah. The question is, is it?
Is it?
I would like to have some.
Well, come on. We're just, I didn't like it back then.
My message was first to agree the update to the task order, which is pulsing in a much lower and want to this project at pump station sixty-four. If you read through the third hanging phone sign after me. So we're happy to say no, and it all looks good. And we appreciate, um, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Ward looking at this and saying this money on the project at pump station sixty-four. So, I mean, I don't understand that they can do the actions for us that's to accept the lower amount.
Yes.
Yes, Alan.
If we're, if, um... You kind of, if the lower, uh, we need to do it, uh, so, um, and we might say, uh, update.
That's why I...
We're very, 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 very.
Oh, that works. I think your motion is active this time that they're going to go.
The fiscal year twenty-two budget will not be impacted. There will be modifications in how the appropriations are going to be spent. And so instead of, uh, saying putting a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the destruction of the original thought process, they can divert the force main to thirty-eight thousand dollars and reappropriate or reinvest into the whole tail, these other pump stations. And so what I want to be able to do is provide to the commission with those updates so they understand that the total amount, total appropriations for fiscal year twenty-two budget is not impacted. However, what we're spending on those specific projects, projects and allocating the investment in the infrastructure is changed. And I want to be able to provide that so that the commission understands how the money came.
Yeah, Alan.
I'm glad to have the motion resolved.
Now, Alan, to your point, they're changing the plans to what they're doing at the pump station. And I appreciate they really want that information. It's a positive upon us. So, you know, I, I'm not going to be wrong. My motion, my motion is to accept the new task, task order, which is a need upon plan to lower the amount. You can vote now.
That's not actionable, I don't know. I mean, with the updates, he...
I mean, it's going to be in your budget, no, it's not. So, no revision.
That's what I said.
Right. It's just a normal project with the lines. We want to prove the plan change.
That's the other, that's the waste water. We need, we have, well, we have a three hour.
So, this, this basically after the task order, a real task order was signed, um, there were sort of opposed changes. So that task order means they're going out of the field. They're preparing this design. On further review, when they got out of the field, they said, we can make this happen a lot deeper. We can make this happen differently. And so we need to save our money a different way. And we try our best to invest in it.
We're half of the eligible South Carolina residents that received at least one vaccine. So I am happy to report that Charleston County, the vaccination rates are higher than the state average. And so this is according to the same information, DHEC has the dashboard all broken down by county. So Charleston County has a population of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four residents ages twelve plus. And South Carolina DHEC has reported two hundred thousand, ninety-nine residents, or fifty-seven point eight percent of Charleston County population ages twelve plus have completed their vaccination. Sixty-five percent of the Charleston County population ages twelve plus have received one vaccine. So when you compare Charleston County to the national average, we're way in line. Charleston County, and this is based on the CDC COVID data tracker, where fifty-seven and a half percent of the population ages twelve plus have been vaccinated, and sixty-six point five percent of the national population ages twelve plus have received at least one dose. So if you compare Charleston County, we are in line with the national average on a state level or below. So it breaks it down, the vast majority have received the Pfizer vaccine, the burners in second most frequently, and Johnson in third most frequently. So the district continuously encourages employees to get vaccinated and not receive the low country state. For all those who have not been vaccinated, the doses that are available. And I encourage you to hold up your sleeve and do your part to keep everybody safe. Both the fire chief and myself maintain contact with the county government entities, public safety and other entities within the low country. So we continuously monitor for monitor modifications, announce the federal level from the CDC, state level from South Carolina DHEC, and the regional level from Charleston County on any necessary updates to the district's operating. Back on the twelfth of May, twenty twenty-one, I sent the district why all your email about the, including the commissioner outlining the governor's executive order twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. And specifically, within section two D of the executive order, they're specific about the mask requirement. And so the town of James Island Burnt College, and this is if you go on their homepage, it automatically brings up a burn policy that unvaccinated individuals need to continue to wear a mask and down off. However, the town continues from practice of the honor system, does not require any proof of vaccination record, but enforces requirements. And as the J I T S D, if you guess what the town, the O C P, that asked it off of, that have not been vaccinated will remain on the honor system or to wear a mask and down off. If you think you're vaccinated and you feel more comfortable wearing a mask, I would obviously encourage people to continue to wear a mask. And if the requirement were to change, if any wearing of the mask requirement to the public meetings, please understand I will try to get you that information as quickly as possible. This is a quickly changing situation, and you've seen a lot of things change throughout the pandemic. And if we get guidance from the CDC, or the state, or the region, we'll continue to drive it out as quickly as possible, as everybody as quick as possible.
Can you put false teeth in the G R office for the question? Can you all, the question going to the G R board, knock that out now?
Well, we also, we can get where every one of the staff can have their best response.
Okay, I asked about the district's policy and their payment office, because now, uh, every person before we know a lot of damage has been caused.
So is Adota Highway the next stop for me for Adota Highway, Saturday the eighteenth of September? We entered parking lot before five o'clock in the morning at eight a.m. And changed, most recently, due to the Saturday, the fourth of September being over Labor Day weekend, the eleventh, the eleventh of September, growing memorial on the fire department. So the next best option would be Adota Highway, Saturday, the eighteenth of September. And as always, we appreciate all the efforts, keeping the highway a little break, we give it a little. As far as the wastewater committee meeting, I appreciate the wastewater committee's continued willingness to meet and facilitate the discussion, make progress on fiscal year twenty-two budgeted infrastructure improvement for the wastewater system. I have some additional dates, and we discussed this before, as far as I'm proposing a double header committee meeting on the second Monday in September. It would be a six-thirty administrative committee, we haven't met with the administrative committee yet this year, followed by the wastewater committee meeting, and immediately followed the administrative committee. I've spoken to the chairs of the respective committee about these proposed upcoming dates, and again, I very much appreciate the willingness to hash out these discussions, maybe level prior to bringing them all to the proposed changes to the commission level. And I understand it's a time and effort dedicated to these committee meetings, so thank you. I'll carry that into the proposed ways and means committee meeting, and that would be for Monday, the eighteenth of October, where we discuss some of the initial ticket items for fiscal year twenty-three. Typically, the second Monday, that would be the eleventh, Mr. Vaughn Davron from Compass Financial Advisor, he already filed, he cannot change, he cannot be available on the eleventh of October. The next available opportunity is the third, Monday in October. Again, our meetings typically, maybe we start at six-thirty p.m. Much more information to come on that. And so I'm not proposing to schedule additional committee meetings during the November and December months of twenty twenty-one, stick to the regular commission meeting. Within the Christmas holiday, being Saturday, the twenty-fifth of December, pointing out the fourth Monday of December, twenty-seventh, would be the Monday after Christmas. And so more information, the commission will certainly consider bumping up the date for the regular commission meeting in December, as well as that was done last year, that was the first commission meeting within December, we have that prior to, well in advance of the Christmas holiday. So more information to come on that. So while we're talking about dates well in advance in the future, I'd like to invite all the district commissioners to the district team building training event on Thursday, the ninth of December, at one thirty p.m., located in new fire station number one. The theme of this training will be, we're all in the same team, will provide the district commissioners an opportunity to interact with district staff from the various departments. So members of the commission will be paired with district staff from the various departments for the team building event. Much more information to come between now and December. But the team building event, goal culmination will be charities bike build, where each of the teams will work together to build a bike that will be donated to a worthy cause here on James Island, benefiting a deserving youth. So again, this is just the initial reminder, it's a date for the team building event, a rare opportunity for the district to bring the various departments working together in a team building training event, participation from the commission, with a house cat, and the overall impact of the event. So this, again, this date is strategically separated from the Thanksgiving holiday and the Christmas holiday, but well after Thanksgiving, well before Christmas, in early December. Much more information to come, please let me know, if you already know you have conflicts, and a lot of people have conflicts over the holiday, please look in else. If you backfill that position, you can have four participants, five people on a team for eighteen team builders of them. So it should be a very good event and helping benefit a very worthy cause with the teams. Obviously, we would not put all of the fleet together in a team, they would with us all, put the bike together. So we would scatter that between fire and state admin and wastewater and solid waste together to make the team work. So please.
Place after lunch?
This is strategically placed after lunch, at one thirty p.m. So everybody should be fueled up and ready to go for a team building event, and we put your mechanical skills to work.
Okay.
So just last week, the district posted for the county manager position, as well as applying position that incorporates both the town's payable and the payroll function. So both of these positions can be found in the district's E T R tab and in heat dot com. The district will continue to set applications to these positions until filled, and the district continues to have positions posted for any available firefighter, vehicle operator, and heavy equipment operator. So please, direct any interested job seekers to the E T R tab or the district's website for all the requirements and all the instructions to apply. So with these positions available, we're always looking for the talent, if you know anybody, can job seeker, please get the word out. The district had excellent participation last Wednesday, the forty-first of July, the James Island intergovernmental council meeting. So I invited an update on the central for sewer expansion project within the Julian Clark neighborhood. The district is still in initial planning phase of the sewer expansion project due to ongoing evaluation of the team's ability to obtain funding for the project. The federal government has pushed two point one billion, and that's a B, with a billion to the state for infrastructure projects. Obviously, sewer and water are applicable uses for that two point one billion dollars. And the district is working with the South Carolina Association of Special Purpose Districts to help ensure that the special purpose districts have access to that two point one billion dollars. And I hope to be able to report to you next month in August, if the state has made that official determination. If the access and the funding is positive, then the district will have support from the House side through Representative Wetmore, and support from the Senate side through Senator Senate. And so much more information will be available as the funding options are determined. But the ideal scenario would be a seven point three million dollar sewer expansion project that would include two hundred named properties within the Julian Clark neighborhood. Again, that's the ideal scenario, if all of the funding becomes available through the ideal funding options that, you know, I detailed between the local and the state level. And if the district needs to scale down the sewer expansion project due to funding limitations, the priority would be to address the properties closest to James Island Creek due to ongoing water quality issues in return. The James Island Creek Pass Corps, as well as the James Island intergovernmental council, continues to partner with the district, the town, and the city, and partnerships with the state to address the ongoing water quality issue. So much more information to come on the potential sewer expansion project, and more progress is made in determination of availability and funding in this pipeline. So the packet contains a much more robust financial packet than what the commissioners are using. You will see in there that there's a lot of P A, or not available, within the first couple tabs for specific tables within the district manager report. Honestly, I have not progressed and used this template in the reports to provide you an update since I started. So instead, what I'm proposing to you is to provide you much more information and less overall data as far as the financial concepts and the detail. So what you'll see in your packet is a one-page overview, okay? And every governing body that I've served with has appreciated a one-page overview of the financial status. And what this does is provides a year-to-date budget versus actual for revenues and expenditures. And that one page keeps it more at a macro level, all right? And so anytime that I start talking about this information, please understand that this is not going to match the fiscal year twenty-one audit and financial papers. This is preliminary data associated with, still subject to accruals, gap adjustment, invoice of this still being encoded to fiscal year twenty-one. But this is going to give you a solid framework and a ballpark working on the revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-one. So you'll notice that the nine pages immediately following this one-page summary is all of the detail associated with cost centers within the general fund and within the proprietary fund. My intention is to regularly provide more financial information so that the year-to-date revenue and expenditures are presented in the commission with reporting on budget versus actual figures throughout the year. When I think of the district's financial status, or any government entity's financial status, and reporting to the governing body, I always break down between three components. And you have the fund, the function, and the object, okay? And that's a very fancy way of saying the fund, meaning the major two funds, proprietary fund and the general fund. The general fund being property taxes, and proprietary fund meaning rates from the wastewater bill. So I mentioned the funds, then it goes to function. And when I talk about function, that's detailed as far as the expenditures for the cost centers within the fund. And that's how the one page is rolled up to the commission, okay? So the general fund, you've got total revenue. Then you have the cost center within the general fund between admin, fire, fleet, and solid waste, okay? And so you have those expenditures detailed and rolled out as far as how the budget versus the actual is looking through fiscal year twenty-one. My intention is not to wait until July, twenty twenty-two, if we do this again. And we will, on a monthly basis, be going through the year-to-date revenue and expenditures, being the comparison to budgeting figures versus the actual revenue and expenditure. And so I have that detailed out on the wastewater expenditures. And you've got wastewater admin versus wastewater operation. And you'll see the wastewater operation is much more detailed. And why, you see after that first column of the funding, the category, which would be the fund and the function, and you get the specific grouping of general ledger line. And this is how we translate this into that nine pages of detail. So anything you see that starts with oh one, one oh one, is detailed for admin. Fire is oh one, one oh two. Fleet is oh one, one oh three. And solid waste is oh one, one oh four. The third component of this report is based on object code. And you're going to see five digits in the very last portion of the general ledger line. And so what that is detailing to you is the category for the specific purpose for that expenditure and revenue. And within that detail, we can use an example of how this makes sense to me is anytime I see an object code lower than five hundred, automatically perceive that as a revenue. Any object code that starts with a five or higher is automatically going to be an expenditure. And so that's how we have those details, keep those groupings for you by cost center. So you can see exactly how we are performing as a district on the departmental and our fund level. And so this year-end update is going to look different than a monthly update. In a monthly update, approximately one-twelfth of the way through next month, you're going to see eight percent as about the target, okay? And then sixteen and forty-four. So say after three months of the first quarter, we should be about twenty-five percent of the way through our revenues and expenditures. But it's never line up the way it should just make sense. We get revenue throughout the year, and we can tell you when we get those revenues. And then we make major expenditures early on in the year when we decide on our capital and how we're going to make those happen. So as we go through the year, this is kind of how I am going to detail out by fund and function and object. Or by fund and cost center and specific purpose, how we're doing throughout the fund. And these monthly updates, I believe, are more meaningful to give more information to the commission on how we're doing revenue and expenditure wise versus the previous district manager report. So that is why I have that financial information presented differently. And you will also understand that those general ledger lines and those grouping by fund and function and object also match up with the other reports we have online within the budget detail, within the transparency report. And we all use the same general ledger lines for report of revenue and expenditure. And so I know there's a lot of them, but just think of anything below five hundred. When you see those last numbers, that's revenue, anything five hundred and above, that's going to be expenditure. And we'll get you the details as you have questions going further. And that's why I have those high-level numbers rolled up, and we will continue to make those comparisons on a monthly basis.
This is, what is it, a grand, twenty-one?
Theoretically?
No, absolutely.
So theoretically, the auditing will be onsite in the field of September?
No, we've given us everyone, we've brought far the beginning here, but we don't have to, enough to last month of this year. So I'd like to, are we able to do that?
The auditing, yes, the auditing financial?
I don't know.
So the auditing financials are going to be when we complete fiscal year twenty-one in our term?
Okay. There's one question on the council, the county council, is all that life is going to have having heard you say anything? We've done everything now except the last month of the year, presidential decisions, past events, every one? That the annual stuff is, it's like, it's very harmful and illuminating, but I watch the community looking for new financial.
And so when you say the financial, I go right back to the economy thought. So I go to the general ledger by fund, function, object. This is just taking certain things out, and it's not comprehensive. And so to be able to give the commission an understanding of where we are, budget to actual, this, this monthly. So I can, I can do that specifically for you, by, by period, right? And then, and then in August, you will hit the box. And in September, you will get August, right? And on a monthly basis, and when we start having, say, this new year's twenty-three budget discussions, I'm going to be guiding you through fund, function, object, and you'll understand the fund level, the cost center, and the specific purpose for how we're doing revenue and expenditure to plan for that. The previous district manager report, that never made sense to me, and that's why I've never recorded on it, because I've never referenced it. You compile it, you give it to the commission, have one question since I've been here. Number Officer Lawson, Commissioner Lawson, on the very first update, he asked me if I was going to reference the district manager report, and I said no. And that's the only question I ever got from him.
I've been going between a coupon and a basketball, a simple coupon, and now we don't.
And we have it in what I just gave.
Okay, just continue. Just continue.
Hey, just put that on your list of things you can do, but thank you, move on.
So, yeah, the last thing, and I'll get through this real quick, is the upcoming conference with the South Carolina Association of S U D. And obviously, we have a lot of interest to be able to grow. Get that freight twenty-nine of September, Friday after the first, the camera release and the red changes and reservations. Please get that to, the camera sheet will make it happen, and I appreciate if you're interested in going and staying in training. The one day session I went to, it managed very, very intense and good training. So I hope that that conference kind of follows that, and, you know, we all get to learn more about special purposes.
Okay, and so, and that's what we told, you remember, so I mentioned this, we told, um, we kind of touched upon that, we need one of them, and so we, yeah, this is, yes, I told it to be clear that it is actually, but I don't know. Yes, but we had it sort of, we connected it ten.
Yes, you're, you're working today.
We're with Clipper, that's the director operating the rest of the company, and we need to do.
And this is, I want to make sure that it's accurate. Yes, and this is, October twentieth, would be the, uh, the intergovernmental council meeting. Well, that's, yeah, that's why I wanted to be sure that they have the actual images, because I do remember the meeting rather well, so I didn't take that. And that, that is my monthly report.
Thank you.
This is great, correspondent article, I have that last question down, because also, the, um, what was the report?
The payment offer, from the Lingo?
Um, it's that's all about cars for office, it's everything related to, so it's great, it supplies with work document.
Rest of the body. So you're opposing the number to work? That one customer group is allowed within the time. So we have game state, I know, patients in there. The mask requirement, do not have a specific mask requirement for those. We also have a less than glass room that is partitioned, reserved between the district employee and the customer. We don't have a mask requirement either in the city and the town, or the private company, the private extended.
Okay, we got the answer, we're still on the number ten, it's on a newspaper article, and we can maybe have one on our package. Number nine, oh, approved, no, excuse me. Number nine, committee in Newtown, Public Service District, presented reports from July twelfth, waste, meat, and wastewater committee. The minister in here, is anybody we have any? Any reports? No, there's not many, no reports, and that was when we're all there, we accept our most grant, I'm sorry. There was a lot of information, I'm sure, that the competition was happening, but yes. Okay, good. Correspondent from the newspaper article.
What we have, in very fact, is, uh, is an article from, uh, by Corey Johnson, associated with the sewer fight. And we are working to be able to get that instruction rolling. Obviously, the code was mentioned in the article, we, we exonerate the bribe of the developer. About that, what we coordinated between the South Carolina Department of Transit, we see that it's well over the town. There's been a coordinated effort to be able to address this underlying issue. And we hope to be able to have the instruction up and rolling, if possible. And, you know, had we had the update, I'll be able to focus the division, while we, uh, just color it in the yard.
Just for the record, I think I'm going to do this before. If Mr. Hudson, who's only told about this, you know, uh, it may be, we're in the three months. There is no way on God's earth that this is this much to hold out, I mean, he's, it's pretty much. So if, if, I take the reason of the fact that he's laid it in our lap, it is our fault. And he's not setting any responsibility to the fact that he's trying to notify the past.
All right, I am, we're at the end of our, is there nobody signed up for the season, or is nobody signed up for the state of town? I make a motion, I make a motion for a government. Okay. What call, please?